All righty, it is 4:31 on July 22nd. I'll call to order the Planning Commission hearing. I am Sam Rocklaw, Service President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Ellison, Brown, Coleman, Sweetsie, Lupke-Pier, Schrader, and Olson. Our first order of business today is to approve the minutes and actions from the July 2019 City Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, I will pass the mic to Vice President of the Commission Lupke-Pier for a report from Committee of the Whole.
Yes, from our July 11th Committee of the Whole meeting, the Commission recommended approval of the appointment of Adam Hutchins to the zoning board of adjustment, the land sale of 533rd Street South, the land purchase of 503rd Street South, and also approval of the Portland at Third Tiff Plan.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? I'll take that as a motion for approval of the consent agenda from Committee of the Whole, July 11th Committee of the Whole. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, next up, we will organize our agenda for today's meeting. For those in the audience, I will walk through the agenda. If you are here wishing to testify on an agenda item, please raise your hand if you want to testify against the item or to change the recommendation of the item. If you're here to testify for the item, you can stand at our consent agenda hearing. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item number one is the Nordic and Sable, 729 Washington Avenue North, 701 to 729 and a half Washington Avenue North, 722 to 728 Third Street North, 425 and a half Eighth Street North, and 250 and a half Seventh Avenue North. A lot of halves in there. Ward three. Is anyone here wishing to speak on item number one? Seeing none, item number two, we have a conditional use permit on the Kipstand Academy Edition at 5,000 Oliver Avenue North, Ward four. Is anyone here to speak on item number two? Seeing none, we'll put item number two as well on consent. Item number three is Divine Institute, 628 East Franklin Avenue in Ward six. Number of applications there. Is anybody here to speak on item number three? Seeing none, we'll put item number three on consent. Item number four is 3634 Central Avenue Northeast, minor subdivision, and site plan review. Is anybody here to speak on item? CUP, sorry there. Anybody here to speak on item number four? Seeing none, we'll put that on consent. Item number five is Greenway 31 at 3818, 3822 and 3826 West, 31st Street in Ward 13. A number of applications there for at-home apartments. Is anyone here to speak on item number five? Seeing none, we'll place item number five on consent. Item number six is Lutheran Church of God, Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd, 4,800 Ewing Avenue South in Ward 13. A conditional use permit and variance there. Is anyone here to speak on item number six? Seeing none, we'll put item number six on the consent agenda, and we will discuss item number seven. So, our agenda has amended. Our items one, two, three, four, five, and six are on consent, and we'll discuss item number seven. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, Commissioner Ellison?
I'm recusing myself from item number two.
Commissioner Ellison is recusing herself from item number two. Duly noted, thank you. Any other discussion on the agenda as amended? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved with that. We'll open the public hearing on the items on the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to speak on those items, one through six, the consent agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, moving on to our one item for discussion today, item number seven, Weber Mart Bodega Smokes, 1701 44th Avenue North in Ward four. Lindsay Silas is our staff member. Take it away, Lindsay.
Good evening Commissioners. The project before you is a proposed rezoning at 1701 44th Avenue North. This is for Weber Mart. The subject site is Zone C1, and it's just over 5,000 square feet in size. The applicant has proposed to rezone the site, similar to what we saw mostly last year before the tobacco moratorium went into place, the proposals to rezone the site in order to create a new space within the existing building that would be an exclusive tobacco shop. So, the floor plan is here, which you can see carves out a small, just over 200 square foot space that would be used as an exclusive tobacco store, meaning that it would be eligible to sell menthol and flavored tobacco. The applicant had applied for a waiver of the restrictions of the interim ordinance, which was approved by the City Council on June 7th, waiving the restrictions of the ban on the creation of new tobacco product shops. So now this application is, the applicant requesting to rezone the property in order to move forward with establishing a tobacco product shop. And the site right now, as far as policy guidance goes, the existing 44th is a community corridor. Typically, under the existing comprehensive plan, we would not support rezoning from C1 to C2 along a community corridor. And while it's not approved yet, the Minneapolis 2040 Plan likely would support the proposed rezoning, as this is a goods and services corridor and is designated as corridor mixed use under the new plan. So I will stand for questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Thank you, Lindsay. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward and state your name for the record and share any further details you wish to share.
Hello, Planning and Zoning Committee. I prefer this brief statement to read in front of you, and I'll be open for questions. My name is Kevin Aldwark. I'm here today to represent my business. I have been a resident of North Minneapolis for the past 10 years and a small business owner for the past 23 years in the same area. I own a business often stigmatized by a combination of bad reputation and reckless operators. I assure you, my businesses, since I owned several before, never been one of these. My current location maintains a five-star rating across the board online, or whether it's performance-wise. I always found a way to turn my locations and become a hub to serve my neighbors and my community. I pride myself on being involved. I served on my neighborhood association board for the past six years. I'm also a member of the Camden Lions. I serve as the Vice President for that club. My store currently supports and hosts several community initiatives. Some of it is a pop-up market that we support weekly for small and local businesses or any community causes that see fit to use our location to raise funding or awareness. I urge you today to approve my application. Rezoning would allow me to section off part of my store to be dedicated to tobacco products only, which would not be visible from the grocery side of the store. Anyone under the age of 21 won't be allowed entrance. That would eliminate targeting and exposure while giving me a chance to serve my customers and my community that demands that product daily. It would allow me to hopefully regain my customers back. Please keep in mind that in our neighborhood, we lack those kind of establishment. Other neighborhoods might have two to three establishments like this. In North Minneapolis, we have none. Before the recent tobacco changes, I had a thriving business with full eight-time employees and four part-time, all at $13 an hour, all hired locally. Some of my employees weren't qualified for a job somewhere else. Sorry, I lost track. We currently operating with two full-time employees and two part-time employees. These changes has shifted my customers to nearby city. This ban has cost me 70% of my customer traffic. This reflected on all sales I cited tobacco. Allowing this rezoning will build local jobs as well as tax revenue for the area instead of losing it to nearby suburbs. That would give me the chance to rehire back my employees. Rezoning would create around 10 more jobs for our community. Finally, I'd like to comment on the City and Planning Committee decision for denial. I'd like to say that contrary to what City and Planning Department states when they recommended denial, rezoning my property would be in line to the City Comprehensive 2020 and 2040 Plan. Father, my council member for the area worked hard on creating a commercial pedestrian district, which is, I'm currently in the middle of that street on 44th Avenue between Penn He created that district because we lacked the facilities or the buildings as commercial in North Minneapolis. By reclassifying 44th Avenue, it would allow even current homeowners to re-upgrade their zoning to commercial, which would attract more businesses to the area. I believe I do have the community support for this project. I have my Ward four council member support. I have my neighborhood organization support. I also have submitted a petition with 400 signatures. 200 of those are actually elder that live in nearby public housing that has no means to travel somewhere else to get their needs in tobacco, whether we like it or not. We also included 90, almost 90 emails from residents that commented in favor of this project, from my awareness too, that recommend denial because of the tobacco product itself and were approximately within 600 to 700 feet from a high school. I'd like to mention also that in my 23 years in North Minneapolis handling tobacco products and alcohol, I never once sold them underage. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I hope I could count on your support in this matter. Do you have any questions for?
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? None, seeing none at this time. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify today? Please come to the mic, state your name and address. You can come all the way to the microphone. Thank you, and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Robin Lewis. I am the Chair of Weber Camden Neighborhood Organization. I believe in Kevin for several reasons. It's not just the tobacco, but it's a business, and business need to run, and you're in profit. And because he has to, he doesn't have this option to sell products, his other parts of his business, he's in debt because this is a big part of that. Now, people can say tobacco's bad, but people are going to smoke tobacco. And the thing is, is that when I feel like I have a car, I can go anywhere I want. Some people live right down the street and frequent his store often, and you can go in there for everything. They have everything, he has everything in his store you want. One guy came in there and wanted socks. So it serves more than just tobacco. But he has to survive as a business owner, and that's what's important, I see right here. But it's a hub. I've learned and met so many people as a neighborhood organization, a Chair of my organization. I mean, I've networked, I've met people, I see how the youth come in there, and he knows them firsthand. He has seniors in there that he really cares with who are from Hamilton Manor. He does a lot for the community. He's very vested, and he's been a mentor to me because he was on the neighborhood organization in the past, which is very important, because we are all here connected to him, because we want to serve our community, and he is a hub for that. So I urge you to look at that, too. I understand that you may have concerns about tobacco and all that, but he's very responsible. He will not sell to children, and me as an organization chair, I would not allow that either. But I don't see that as a threat. I do see this, that he must survive, and the foot traffic that he's talking about, when you come to this store to get one product, a lot of times you end up buying more than just one product. And he needs that to survive. It's important to him. I can't emphasize that enough. So I'm saying that you give him the opportunity to rezone. He's thought about this, he's worked hard, he's been before you several times to try to make this happen. So I urge you to give him, as a small business owner in North Minneapolis, the opportunity, because within that, he will also encourage and serve other small businesses, because he believes that. And you have like-minded people together, that's what you'll get. We want a community where we can all get services within our community and not have to go to Brooklyn Park, have to go to southeast Minneapolis, Fridley. You know, like I said, I have a car. I can go anywhere I want, but some people don't have that opportunity, and they truly do use the store for more than just pop and chips. He has everything in his store. So I urge you to consider this, because it is important to our community, and if he's no longer able to run because he can't afford to, it will be a loss to our community. It truly will be. So I urge you to consider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Last call. Anybody else wish to testify? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Irma Burns, and I've been a resident of Weber Camden for like 315 years. And Kevin has been access in that area for a long time, as he said. And when I met him, I met him as a person, being a great person in that community and neighborhoods, of helping people, giving people opportunities, just being a great person in the community. And if it's devastating to his business for him not to be able to advance his business, it wouldn't be just for him. Like Robin said, it would be devastating to the whole neighborhood, community, because he gives a lot, his time. It's just, you know, he's just an all-around person that likes to help people. And I just also urge you, can you please help him in this situation and giving him what he's asking for as far as extending for tobacco? Again, I'm not one to judge for that, but it's a legal thing, and people use it. I've heard a story about a person that was in elderly, the building that's right down the street, trying to go get cigarettes, which they usually normally get from his store, from a far-off store, and actually had an accident. I mean, I'm not saying that that's the case, but if they could just walk right down the street there and got those cigarettes, you wouldn't have to go as far as she was trying to go, maybe that wouldn't have happened. I mean, it is what it is, you know? So this is something that we are asking you guys to please assist him in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify today? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Johnny Johnson. I am the co-chair of Weber Camden. I'm going to speak on behalf of Kevin. From the time that I've been knowing him for numerous years, of the business that he had, it was always serving the community. I remember once he had a gas station, he allowed fundraising, use his own water and everything else just to help his community out. Various times, he had always been there, just to meet the need, not his need, but the need of others in the community. Down through the time, it always been a place where we can go and sit, like the Chair was saying, there was a place where you go and you can just find a peace of mind, make connection with the community. Because the people's there, that's the kind of person he is. He uses this pop-up market, yes, it's open to the community, and it serves a great need there, fundraising for various causes, you know, that the community needs. And not allowing him to continue this would be devastating to our community. Yes, it would be very devastating not to allow him to maintain that by not having, letting him have the use of furthering his business through tobacco sales. And he has stated that it will be separated from the youth, you know, they have no contact there. And he has worked very hard on this. Through the years, he's been working very hard to keep this community going, to be an asset. He is a great asset to Weber Camden. So you don't let him do this, it would be devastating to the community, to our youth, because he employ youth, he's always encouraging youth, and his seniors there. Numerous times I was seen, seniors had to go in the rain. They don't have to go that far. They take a bus, carrying groceries. He also gives to those seniors when they're lack of stuff. He makes sure that they have what they need. He feeds the community, too. He makes sure nobody goes hungry, as long as he has a shop there, a store there. And like you say, he have some everything there, and not just food, you know, there's various items that he uses, you know? And I firmly hope that you guys agree to allow him to continue that work that he's doing in his community.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Brockton Schumacher. Did you want my address?
Yes.
Look at my address, it's 4328 Humboldt Avenue North.
Thank you.
And I live in Weber Camden. I'm also the treasurer of the WCNO. And I mean, this is really a lot more than just a smoke shop. This is a grocery store for people who can't go anywhere else to get groceries. It's a huge senior living facility, and they really can't go anywhere else. They can't go the extra few blocks. They can't go to Brooklyn Park. It's a bank. Kevin gives loans to people so they can buy food. He does it on a daily basis. He keeps a book, a notebook, and these people, if they're to go to a bank, they'd be told no, they'd be told 30% interest. Kevin gives them a loan, no interest. Pay me when you can. This is an invaluable service to a community that's much poorer than a lot of the communities that we usually are in. And it's really important. This is a mentorship. There's people come in there struggling. They don't know what to do. Kevin lets them network with people who can help them. He allows that, he facilitates that. He helps children if they're struggling, if they committed a crime. He'll talk to them about it. He'll give them a second chance, he'll tell them the right way to do it. So it's just so much more than a tobacco shop. And so, in the neighborhood, we really want this place here, not just for the tobacco, but for the pop-up, like the pop-up events. I don't know if you know what they are. Anybody can come to Kevin and say, "Look, I'm trying to raise money for whatever cause." And Kevin will let them pop up a little tent in his driveway on the weekend, and people can come, maybe they'll have free snow cones or hot dogs or something, you know, and people will come, and they'll be able to interact. They were fixing bikes last week over there, so, just for free. And so, it's really, it's a neighborhood hub, it's a neighborhood service. And so, it's just so much more than tobacco shop. So I really would urge that you guys let this project go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amanda Dobbs. My address is 4338 Logan Avenue North. Thank you all for taking a moment to listen to the North Side community about the decisions that you are making. They truly affect our everyday lives. The very reasons that the City is proposing to deny Mr. Adewok's request for a zone Weber Mart from a C1 to a C2 are the reasons you must grant him his request. 44th Avenue is being rezoned as a commercial district with a pedestrian focus. Weber Mart has always catered to this focus. People stop by for a freezy on their way to the pool, those waiting for the bus get coffee, and bikers stop in on by from the parkway. According to the Land Use Policy 1.15, businesses should encourage neighborhood character, promote street life and activity. Anyone who's been to Weber Mart knows this unique bodega does exactly that. From Saturday pop-ups to displaying and selling local art and goods, Mr. Adewok's store is the hub of community activity on 44th. I have read through the City's reasoning behind its denial in its entirety, and I assert that if the City of Minneapolis cannot put on paper the exact real reason why you won't approve this tobacco bodega, then you must not deny it. The menthol ban has had real consequences. The City's quest to get people to quit smoking has had a disproportionate effect on people of color. The regulations that the City has enacted will be directly responsible for the closure of Weber Mart unless you all step in now. Currently, the former customers of Mr. Adewok are going a little over a mile away to purchase cigarettes and other convenience products. This consequence, unintended or not, must be addressed. Why can liquor stores sell menthols? Mr. Adewok is proposing completely sectioning off tobacco products from all who under 21. Isn't this the same reasoning to allow liquor stores to sell menthols? I understand that ordinances and regulations put in place are here to help the community be safe. Another empty storefront on 44th will not help that. The median income of residents in Weber Camden is under $34,000 a year. Many people rely on Weber Mart for food due to transportation issues. We deserve a bodega where we can quick pick up fresh fruits and vegetables, prices comparable to Cub and Target. We deserve a place to be able to send our kids for quarter and dime candy. We deserve to be listened to when we tell you what's best for our community. It's clear the Weber Mart Bodega Smokes project has a wide community support in a neighborhood of 3,000. How can the City Planning Commission, in good conscience, possibly vote it down? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Yes, yeah, please come back. Please come to the microphone.
Honestly, I never pursued a smoke shop in my entire life, although the businessman in me would want a smoke shop in that area, it'll be the only shop there. The reason I proposed 200 square feet is just to go around what my customers and community require. I don't want to carry pipes. I don't want, I never carried them. The legality carry before and now, and I still don't carry them. So for my business to go around the ban is why we're seeking this rezoning. I made sure that it's as minimum as possible. I don't want to add on or increase my business in tobacco, believe it or not. My objective is just to service and have what I lost a year ago. My sales diminished by 90, between 90 to $96,000 a month because of the menthol ban. And this is how, when I applied for a waiver, I applied for it because of financial reasons. Honestly, right now, it's unmaintainable the way it stands, and with granting the C2 and establishing the section off for tobacco, we could have two birds and one stone. We could eliminate targeting and exposure while maintaining residence, pedestrian, and probably, hopefully, down the road, encourage more people to invest in that area when they see traffic. But you can't just bring investors to a dead street. I want to keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other people wishing to testify, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Would somebody like to start us off with discussion or a motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Coleman.
And I would love to, staff, but let me start with Councilmember Schrader.
Sit, now it's on. Thank you. We've heard about the waiver, and it's obviously in our report that at the June 7th City Council meeting, the City Council granted a waiver. And I was not able to review the council video or minutes, and I would really appreciate some sense of what the com- some sense of what the conversation was, and the intent of the city in granting that waiver.
Sure, well, I also was not at that meeting and chairing, so we had other council members out, I'd see if staff can give a little bit more of an update.
At the ZMP meeting for the waiver, the, basically, the council members, there was a lot of discussion about what the right path forward was, and eventually, there was a split vote on whether to move forward, but the findings that the council made at that time had to do specifically with a specific hardship for this store, given its, because I don't have a zoomed out image, but given its proximity to other suburbs that were around a mile away on a couple of different sides. So the findings that the council made was specifically related to this shop having a specific hardship that necessitated a waiver to the interim ordinance based on that, and I think that there was a lot of discussion about wanting to ensure that, that there was not another vacant storefront on 44th.
Commissioner Coleman.
I'm not clear as to what the effect of a waiver would be absent a rezoning. If you could explain to me what the waiver would grant to the applicant absent a rezoning.
Basically, the waiver granted the applicant the right to pursue a rezoning. There would not have been a route forward for him to pursue the rezoning with the moratorium in place and applying to his property. So at that time, there was, the clear path forward was that he was going to need to wait until that action was final and then apply for a rezoning, and that's why we're back here today.
Commissioner Schrader.
Sure, just end of follow-up to that, was there any indication that they would go forward or not? I mean, I read in the application that it was clear at the time that only, by granting that waiver, it only gives you the right to go through, and knowing that we have similarly situated tobacco shops that have also been denied, one in my own ward. So I just want to kind of be clear on what the expectation was at that time.
As you noted, not necessarily all the members of the zoning and planning committee were in attendance at that meeting, I think there was only four, so there was the minimum for a quorum, so, you know, it sounded like the conversation at the time was among the committee members who were there, they expected that they, you know, the ones who voted in favor of granting the waiver would likely vote in favor of a rezoning. But whatever the council make up at the ZMP meeting, that this will go to eventually, obviously, I can't speak to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthke.
I actually have a question for the Neighborhood Association president.
Actually. Do you have some question?
We're gonna, just, if addressed by Councilmember, so Neighborhood Association president with question by the Commissioner Luthke here.
Yeah, so my question is, given Kevin's business and how integral it is to the neighborhood and community, has there been any talk with the association and with the council member about finding other ways to support him, whether through grants or finding other means of revenue? I mean, is there, what else has been looked into yet to support him, other than tobacco? Because I totally get that it's an important cornerstone to the community, I'm a North Minneapolis resident, I know of this business, I used to live in Hawthorne, so, you know, I'm just wondering, what else has been done to try and keep him there? Because I see that the need he serves with everything else that he sells and does and contributes.
So you're saying, as an organization, what we have looked into to do this?
Like, it sounds like you guys are a very active Neighborhood Association, and that he's to serve on the board, is that correct?
We support Cunningham, we've discussed this with him, and we've also discussed it with Kevin, and we support him as it stands, and so we believe this is the best option for us. And you're looking in terms of grants and things like that?
Well, I'm looking at, has any, like, has anybody explored alternative business models or business plans or any, any other neighborhood? I know we've had different improvement business grants along West Broadway, for example. Has anybody looked at approaching Philippe, for example, about is there something the city can do to help Kevin during this time?
Is that because you say that we shouldn't do the tobacco?
I'm saying, given that this is something that's been...
So, no, we have not, because we think this is the best option to do this. Well, if you can speak on that, but we, as the chair, have decided that we will support this option here, and I've discussed it with Philippe Cunningham, and I feel that this would be the best option, so we are standing behind him in the support of this, because as I have told you before, it's, he needs to support this business, and financially, he can do that and still maintain all the things that you're talking about in terms of the hub, providing external things besides the cigarettes. Like I said, a guy comes in for socks, a person comes in for tools, things like that that they need, dish soap, diapers, fresh fruit. And so we feel that this would be the best way for him to continue to provide that service and still maintain his income, his business, because in the end, this is a business, and he must maintain that. So this seems the way, and this is where he's been going and working very hard for years to do that.
Right.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yeah, I mean, actually, if you have the information, I would like to know.
Yeah.
The reason I applied towards the end, because honestly and in good faith, I wanted the ban to work personally. I have kids that was yeh high, they taller than me, and part of the issue that we focused on, and I was part of the flavor tobacco ban before, I pushed for it. I had, I'm by a high school, and usually, this started as, this is the first year of school, we ID them, they're underage, by the time of graduation, they constantly, their ID on your table, hey, he can't tell me no. So we pushed for flavor, we pushed, I was on board with 21. This is common sense ordinance. If I care about my community, I want to prevent that product from being accessible to youth, and I do above and beyond with that. As seeking alternatives, we worked with small business program to see how we could do this without, with that small of a scale, there isn't, really. And my particular dilemma is, I'm right on the edge between two other cities that allow that product in every single store, with lesser age requirement, with lesser, with lesser price requirement. We have a price cap in Minneapolis, we have 21 in Minneapolis, Robinsdale, Brooklyn Center, Crystal, Don't. So this has been a challenge for me, and I didn't re-seek zoning before, I tried every single avenue, I worked with Neon, we had consultants stop by where it's like, oh, how can he improve on this? He have everything. I actually, I'm a UPS pickup drop-off center, I fax and copy for residents. I receive packages even if it's not through UPS, just to prevent theft. I mean, we tried every single avenue, and honestly, the fight right now is to keep that place open, because I feel that I do good for my community. If I felt that this is, this is just not for me alone, believe it or not, I mean, I was doing fine till this became, became an issue. We tried to address it. You could add up a deli, what, do we want a deli on every corner in Minneapolis? It's, I mean, it becomes, you gotta, you gotta specify, you gotta, I mean, that's why I'm trying to do this, just to maintain both. I don't want to take away from my grocery and taking care of the grandma that needs milk, and I'm cheapest in the area. In the same sense, I don't want her to skip, stopping by my store because it's available in Brooklyn Center for a dollar more. That's why we did this, we explored other avenues. I mean, this changed so quick on us as a business model, and we suggested alternatives before even the ban came in effect. I honestly reached out to every single council member, so we could do this without a ban. We've been doing, we are leaves away in prevention to starting smoking from 96 to now, I could tell you that much, and this took education, not prohibition. We could, we could do this and more without, without, without affecting smaller businesses, and I guarantee a lot of people, a lot of small businesses are affected by this, it's damaging to this, at this point. I'm $96,000 in debt because of this. And I still try my hardest to keep my doors open and service my community, but at this point, I mean, after seeking other alternatives, there isn't. It's either we could change this and incur more construction costs, separate this alone and try it that way, or shut down. That's the only two, that's the only two options I see right now. Again, this is also needed in our community, I mean, in whole North Minneapolis, the closest tobacco shop in Minneapolis is on West Broadway, it's, it's three miles that way, but in Brooklyn Center, Robinsdale and Crystal, it's 1.2, 1.4, 1.3 miles away from my front door. This is a walking distance, if you're really adamant about getting your product, so that's why when we seek rezoning. And we went through the waiver, actually, and we went through, in front of city council, and it was, that meeting was, I believe, July 17th, it was 11 to 1 in favor of me getting rezoned. The one vote, two council members, I believe, were absent, Mr. Gordon was against, and 10 votes were in my favor. So we went not only through the waiver, we went through city, full city council too on this, and this is why, it's like, I don't understand, are we gonna keep going through meetings on this? So I mean, I honestly, on my end, I try, if I could maintain my business without tobacco, I'll do it. I tried that model twice before in the same location and never worked.
I just want to jump in to be clear, that was to grant a waiver, that was not for the rezoning.
Well, no, I understand, we went through one...
Well, doesn't sound like you do, because I mean, it's, they're not synonymous at that point.
We went through one meeting for the waiver, and it was in full city council, then went in front of the city council to retrofit that waiver, and it was 10 to 1. And now, my understanding that this is the last, the last step, the last step along the way, so.
To be, to be clear, they're both separate. One is, one is rezoning, one is the waiver. One lets you do the rezoning, if that's how you wanted to go, I would consider them very different processes, and one can't come without the other. And I, that, it seems to be a point of confusion, like that no one in the...
No, no, I understand that we're following procedure, but also, I mean, this one in front of city council, if, it wasn't like a split, no, no, it was 10 to 1 in that day, I'm saying, just to give you, and this is with the support of council member Cunningham.
Commissioner Ellison, do you have a question?
And this is for the owner. We did get one letter asking us to deny...
We actually have two letters that ask for denial.
Okay, look, I just want to, but you've had tobacco in your store before, and so I just want to, some of the concerns this letter writer talked about was drifting second-hand smoke litter, candy flavored products, and papers, pipes, or other paraphernalia that can facilitate inhalation of street drugs. Was that concern before, when...
It's never been a concern, I'm actually one of the cleanest stores in the Twin Cities when it comes to surrounding, I'm pretty much adopted a block up and, up and down with litter, and it's very well known about me, as far as litter in that street is the cleanest in Minneapolis, I've put my name on it. As far as the product that the letter addresses, we already carry, even with the ban, we already have some of these products. Me, as a business owner, I could expand them and include more paraphernalia. The way I do it is, there is a need for this, it doesn't mean that I have to sell it. If a customer asks me for a scale, and I know that, what's the scale for? It's for hardcore drugs. I'm more really, I feel more really responsible if I have accessibility to that item, so I never carry that. If somebody asks me for a pipe, and they do, I don't want to sell it to you, I'm by a high school, I'm in the middle of a community, I have a big grocery store down the road, I have a library that I could see from my front door. I don't want to come buy a crack pipe from you, go, and it's available somewhere else, and I'm not gonna judge you, but for me, I personally feel responsible to my community if I carry products like this. But for instance, if somebody want to smoke marijuana, who am I to judge him on his own time if he's an adult and he want this product? I mean, we're pushing for legalization on some end, some, some products is a no-no for me. I'm not, I'm not there, I make money by selling products, by selling more, but some certain products, I refuse to carry, because this is, I'm a community activist, I'm not gonna sell you a crack pipe from here and go volunteer with you on the other end from here. It doesn't work that way, there is moral responsibility to this. So when I proposed 200 square feet, usually people will want as big as possible for a smoke shop, I want it as little as possible, because I want to restrain myself, first with space, second with the product that we just lost eight months ago. And believe it or not, this product is still readily available within Minneapolis, because there, there's zero enforcement on it at this point. So for me to, paid by the law and says not to carry this product when the, the next person is selling it under the table, I don't want to sell products under the table, it's either I do it in the open, this is a legal product, or not, and this will give me the means to do it. Am I, do I envision this as to be a hub for drug paraphernalia? Absolutely not, I live within a block of that store. I have kids that walk in to my store at 9 o'clock at night, and I want to make sure that this stays safe. It's, it's my personal responsibility too, to be responsible for my community, I mean, I'm not, I'm making money off of them, but in the same sense, I'm not out to harm them, this is my people too. This is how I look at it.
Any other, Commissioner Coleman?
Now I am confused about what the city council is saying. Lindsay, if you could answer another question. I thought I understood from your previous response that there was a planning and zoning committee where the, there were four members, and there was a split vote, but ultimately a vote in favor. And the applicant just brought up a vote where the numbers were 11 to 1 at the city council meeting. I'm not clear what that vote was on, and I'd like to have some clarity on that.
So the, the hearing for the waiver was in front of the zoning and planning committee, of which councilmember Schrader is chair, he was not present, nor was councilmember Bender. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting, which was only four members, it was Reich, Goodman, Ellison, someone else. Gordon. And I actually just looked up the actions, it sounded like the motion passed on a voice vote amongst the four of them, which then forwarded it to the full city council, which was the following week, and that's the vote that he was referencing, that Kevin was referencing that was 10 to 1, with councilmember Gordon voting against as the chair, or as the author of the menthol ordinance, I believe.
So all of the other city council members voted for the waiver, and they kicked it over to us, thank you. I mean, I think we need to get honest here, what, if there's a message there or not, I'd like to know. It seems like 11 to 1 is a message. I have some concerns about the fact that the 2040 plan will support this. That's a pretty strong statement in the, in the staff report. We aren't under the 2040 plan, I don't, I am not going to start on this vote, voting as if we are already under the 2040 plan. I'm referring from doing that, I'm not going to do that now. But I am a little concerned that we're getting one message from the city council, and we have this window of time where we, following the current 2040, or 20 Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, does not support it, but we will in the future. So I just want to put that out there, and would love to hear more discussion on this.
I'm gonna, Kimberly, and then councilmember Schrader.
Just to clarify, there seems to be a lot of confusion around the process here, so just to reiterate one more time. So the waiver that went to the zoning and planning committee, that was a waiver from the tobacco moratorium, that vote occurred, that was to allow the applicant to pursue a rezoning application. And there was some discussion among the members of the zoning and planning committee that this would at least allow him a chance to apply for the rezoning through the proper channels, which start with the planning commission. So while there was a council vote in favor of the waiver, there will need to be a separate public hearing before the zoning and planning committee, that then goes to full council on this rezoning application as well.
Commissioner Schrader, then Commissioner Coleman.
Schrader, just to be clear, the council is trying to send one message, we're not trying to send mixed. We want to reduce smoking in the city of Minneapolis. Now, what that looks like and actually doing it is very complex, as, as some of that's being demonstrated here. here. A moratorium was also complex. It's something we don't normally like to do. I have very mixed feelings on them. It is something that, you know, is it fair that one business was hit with the moratorium while others got through before that? And some of, I can only speak for myself and not my other colleagues, but my own feeling is, you know, some businesses were able to have the discussion about rezoning before the moratorium happened. And actually, that, those discussions led to the moratorium. And how would that affect other businesses that are, we're looking to go forward? And I think that, combined with a lot of what we're hearing tonight, really led to the waiver, knowing that this particular applicant would have to go through zoning as well. Now, that said, there's, I know that my colleagues, and I've pushed them, too, that this ideally would not be in zoning and planning. To have a zoning solution for this, I think it's messy. But that said, I feel like for the policy that the city council is trying to work on, zoning seems to be what other cities around the country have turned to as well.
Commissioner Coleman.
And this is the staff report. Our question for Ms. Helene, when do we expect the 2040 plan to be in effect? I hear there has been some movement at the Met Council.
I have a memo in my inbox about the timeline that is currently still in draft form. But the Met Council is planning to act on their portion of the Minneapolis 2040 plan on September 11. And then it will come back to the city for committee meeting, and then full council after that. So, we're working out the exact timeline right now, just based on council calendars. But I think it's reasonable to expect October for an adoption date with a potential effective date to come later.
Commissioners, other discussion questions, or would anybody like to start us off with a motion? We have one application, and that is a rezoning. Commissioner Brown. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lupe here, hiding behind a water bottle.
Okay. So, I'm, I have no motion, because I'm very, very much torn on this. I'm torn for a few reasons. I'm torn partially, just to really just get that out of the way, that the fact that in a year's time, this would be allowed, and no one would care. It seems really harsh to sacrifice a good business owner in North Minneapolis, since we have so few on that altar, given the fact that it's not as if, well, in the 2040 plan, I'd have to apply anyway, and we'd be under the same binding requirements. Part of, is kind of finding that a little bit concerning. So, so that's in the back of my mind. But again, we aren't allowed to rule, is that, because right now, we have a comp plan that is our, our law plan we have to follow here. And that's, that's the other part of this, is that we are a quasi judicial body. We have rules we have to follow, regardless of how we personally feel about something. And one of those rules has to do with the fact that you are, by all accounts, and I mean all accounts, an upstanding guy, and you run a very clean, awesome business that helps the community. We have to look at you as if you are you today, and you sell it tomorrow to the worst human being on the earth. What is the worst damage they could do? I mean, given that we would then upzone this to allow for this, what could someone else do? Now, you probably won't sell. You live there. You work there. You've invested your time, energy, and money, and I know this. But we, we can't do that. We have to act as if it could be Joe anybody. Now, having said that, though, I'm looking through the findings. And I think, I think staff, given how we have to interpret the required legal findings, and they're all in the staff report there, I think they interpret them correctly, given the zoning code we're currently under. I think there's a little bit of, your proximity to other competing businesses in the surrounding suburbs, I think, is intriguing. And I'm sure that that actually weighed heavily on their, I mean, I'm not on the council, but I would imagine why they allowed for this exception to the moratorium. However, I also have to look at, the North Minneapolis has, like, the highest asthma rates in, like, the whole metro area. I mean, 55411 and 55412 are, like, off the charts. So, I know in my community, we get really upset about things that contribute to childhood asthma, especially since 50% of our population's under the age of 18. And we rally against things that, that cause asthma, and yet secondhand smoke is, like, huge. So, I'm, I'm really torn there, because I look at the health of the community, and I can't see where this is like. It's not like we're, you're asking to sell fruit, and we're, it's a food desert. And they go, well, fruit's good for people, you know, this kind of thing. So, I'm, I'm really on the fence on this, because I feel, I feel, I feel...
Please keep it down in the hall.
I feel very strongly about this. And we're, we're bound, we're legally bound on what we can do. However, like I said, the fact that in a year, not even a year from now, you would just walk into planning and submit your plans and walk out with a permit, I mean, really seems a harsh consequence of a casualty of this rule in moratorium. So, I'm very much on the fence about that, because I feel as though there's some extenuating circumstances that make your specific situation different than, and, you know, in any other situation in the city. So, I'm, I'm really grappling with that right now. And I, I need to kind of think on it just a little bit, because I feel as though if, and I feel like there's, there's mitigating circumstances here, and I don't know how to evaluate it under this, at this exact instance. So, I'm hoping in the next five, seven minutes to get clarity.
I just wanted to raise the point that, obviously, we don't know what the zoning code text amendment schedule is at this point. So, it is possible that even once the 2040 plan was adopted, if this particular application was not approved, that the applicant would have to reapply again for rezoning, which would then be evaluated under the 2040 plan. It's, it's not likely that in the very near future, he would be able to just walk in and get a building permit for the new tobacco shop.
Commissioner Schrader.
So, I'm not making a motion. And I should explain, I usually, I try not to make motions at planning commission, because I will see things at zoning and planning. But I think on this, I do want to point out that we've had similarly situated tobacco shops, including one in my ward that is feet from Richfield, a suburb in the south. And I think, while that we don't know when that timeline is, that's what will be pushing my feelings of just being fair to those that are, you know, business owners in my own area that are doing everything right, that I care about, they were, under these same rules, had it denied. And I think, well, it's not what people might want to hear. I think that's what will be my decision tonight.
Commissioners, other discussion, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move staff recommendation to deny the rezoning.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
I'll just outline, and I, I do think this is outlined really well in the staff report. Ultimately, and I think the, the business owner and the neighbors make a compelling case for giving this particular business and ability to alter its business model. However, what we really have to look at are the policies of the comprehensive plan. And on a community corridor like 44th Avenue, its expansion or intensification of commercial uses is really not encouraged. It's really envisions that those corridors may have a mix of smaller scale commercial and residential uses, but not a lot is going to change or intensify. So, I, I don't think going to C2 at this location would be consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Very good. Commissioners, any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
No.
Sorry, I missed it.
That was a no.
Crownsen?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
You said aye as well?
Yeah, aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven to one.
With that, the motion to deny the rezoning, consistent with a staff recommendation, carries. And that closes out our business with item number seven. Kimberly, are there any updates and communications from staff?
Yes, we did receive two appeals from the last meeting, one on the Federal Reserve Bank, and one on the project at 26 and Blaisdell. That will both be on the agenda for the August 1 zoning and planning committee meeting.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Meeting is closed.